Now.
I can't think about that.
And then we've got Mark. Can't, she sent us an update anyway, but I can't get on my email.
Oh, okay. Well, then on the discussion screen, it'll be easier for me.
Right, exactly. I love stuff. Especially when I don't touch it and then it locks up and I have to put my laptop down. Then we kind of focus on what's in there. Even more.
Good evening. Welcome to the study session of February twenty twenty five. I was gonna say January four, but I did not. Donna, you do a roll call, please.
I will. Councilmember Gresh.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sat.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
Well.
Tonight, we have a study session. I'm sorry, as City Manager Mark Ziegler has impressed us about the twenty twenty five city work plan.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, don't leave out our department directors back here, too.
Yeah.
Participate tonight.
Okay.
I'm gonna kick us off with administration. You've seen this probably about a year ago. Tonight or close to it, our twenty twenty four work plans. This is approved by each department annually to give the council and the public an idea of some annual programs and major projects that we're working towards. You'll see, depending on the department, some of some process improvements and kind of just some. I guess, you know, just efforts that are ongoing within departments. Some departments really have less projects than others, right? Public Works is having a lot of projects within our utilities, finance, maybe not so many, it's more process. And and ongoing ongoing work. So you'll see a few things that varies between the departments will highlight. You know, and touch on these as we move through the list here for each time. Please feel free as we go through and ask any questions as we as we kind of highlight these. Again, I'll start with the administration. That comes to city manager clerk, communication, human resource and risk management. We have our ongoing comprehensive plan efforts throughout the rest of this year. So we continue to communicate the efforts in that that comprehensive plan update through all of our media outlets. It's really important as we move forward. We have one more guild, our Adult Employees Guild that we're working with this year. So that we get an effort through the human resources. We've got some more work to do with the WCA and our updating our asset list, coverage purposes. On the second page, citywide safety program. This has been an ongoing effort amongst a number of departments at the end of sharp human resource managers meeting. And then the second item on page two is a transportation data district ballot measure. We've talked about that a number of times. We've scheduled some time on March, sorry, I was gonna say February, March twenty fifth study session to discuss that and process moving forward. There will be, I think, more people involved than those just listed in in the matrix there throughout the city helping to get the message out for that ballot measure. Opioid funds, programming, as Finance Director Giddens mentioned a week ago. We have outstanding balance for with some opioid settlements. The state of Washington, those funds are sitting in the account. We need to find appropriate avenues to expend those funds and allocate those to our community for the appropriately settled bond. Measures. Got some compensation, study work to do for nonrepresented staff. This is typically done with our represented staff through the negotiation period, but nonrepresented staff, it's not, has been comprehensively employed as long as I can remember. So I think it's really important as we move down to the next category, retention, recruitment, engagement of our employees. We need to understand, we need to minimize the loss of employees, we need to retain employees as much as we can. It costs us dramatically more money to move employees in. We need to bring them onboard. So great efforts through our Human Resource Department to bring some of these places. The next one, part-time seasonal wage classification representation. We've got some legal opinions lately. It's our seasonals and part-time staff very well are should be allocated to labor guilds of that works typically included. So we have some catch-up to do there and have some negotiations on our labor groups and getting some of those employees allocated within those labor groups. The last one for administration department is a council retreat. We have said that for May fifth, May, May fifth, I think that group, everybody, that is on your calendars. So we'll have some more information, but again, we're gonna focus on service level expectations. Develop that as we move forward. Kind of lead up with a couple of study sessions, talking more about budgets. So hopefully we can announce people, you know, what in fund balance looks like, what our anticipated revenues and expenditures look like for twenty twenty five. So we can kind of separate the the funds, the money from our service level discussions. We better understand what the councils anticipate service levels are throughout our services in the in the city and develop our twenty twenty six budget, hopefully moving forward from there into twenty twenty seven. So. Pretty quick rundown of the administration, if you have any questions to add to. All right, I'll move on to community development. J Hill is not available, Chinese has a.
I have one question.
Please.
You know, we we find out if we're able to use those for therapeutic courts at all.
I haven't even focused that subject. I've looked through the legislation or at least the settlement language, and the problem is, it's it's not for the bolded points. It's it's treatment, it's education, it's support of first responders, and they're they're as vague as that. So I want to do some research and really see what kind of programs fall into those categories. So I can give the council some opportunities to weigh in on where you best like to see those spots distributed. Again, community development continuing. I think it's important to keep this program here, the hazardous structure abatement. We've talked about a couple of structures that have been through fires lately. We're getting those scheduled for the hearing examiner ruling, so we can go through the abatement process with those. We haven't had luck with the owners. Thought we had some luck with the owners and they've kind of strung along their demo permits. But that is our process for our municipal code is to reach out to the property owners, notice violation, hopefully voluntary correction agreements. They agree those voluntary correction agreements, they take out demo permits or a reconstruction permit. Building is viable. If they don't, then we go to the abatement process and go to the hearing examiner and get a ruling from the quasi judicial process there. So we want to continue the investment in some of these buildings and become a light in our community and our neighborhoods with this program, as well as the community cleanup program. As you know, the comprehensive plan update is ongoing from the end of this year. So that is continuing the effort for community development, continuing what gone efforts to bring across down trail to fruition as well as that creative district. You will see, I think it was in March as well, at the we were doing on the twenty fifth, twelve March, on study session, a presentation on multi-family tax exemption ordinance. So this would allow for multi-family units that meet the threshold of AMI to receive some tax exemptions in certain areas of the community. So we'll discuss that more in March. We have ongoing efforts with our intergovernment permitting software. It seems like that's just that's an evolving project and maintaining that system, making sure it's updated, it's useful by our community when it's when it's fully functioning. I think we're getting good feedback that this is happening from our our builders, our construction community that they can obtain the data they need twenty-four seven, they can apply permits, permits twenty-four seven, and schedule their inspections all through that all through that portal and not have to wait in line, not not wait for a phone call or anything like that. So we continue to work with Tyler Technologies to make sure that that system is up and implemented and fully functioning. Animal licensing, I think this is a little broader with animal control, animal services, it's shelter services that we'll be having multiple discussions on as we, the rest of this year, as we approach the sweeping, just lots of we, definitely, I think, moving along pretty darn fast. And that surmises. We didn't, I don't have any questions there. I'm happy to be. Turn those. Sorry, moving through quick. Okay, all right. I'll ask Judge Greer to help us out with this. Please. Right over the mic.
So administrators on the way to train, so you're due to see. And. So we did present to the city a work plan as a skim over it. If any questions, let me know. So the highlights I want to hit is our first page talks about our treatment court. Although you know, we had the funding crisis about three days ago, we have fixed that. And so the court is fully funded, but all the funding comes from the state of Washington. It also. The funding includes the treatment, interpreters, assistance with disrepute probation. Public defender gets money through ops, public defense. Prosecutor, two thousand one comes back, we have to go through the general plan for the city, state money. And then we have court facilitator, that's retired judge by jurisdiction, it's bilingual, also paid by the grant. So it's hundred percent not funded by the state and helps pay for your prosecutor as well. It's going very well. We have nobody who has a new conviction since he graduated, but still we have one that could be charged. Nothing's fine. But that is going very well. Our goal is to keep that going and continue to lobby the money down. And judges went down a week ago to lobby for many things, including a few of money. Our local representatives are very supportive of the program, and we're hoping to save the budget to the state court, which will then come down to us. More mundane things, so jumpstart our mandatory parts of our work plan. This is what your sheet that. We are going to pick this this year. My staff is trained in daddy Cooper all day tomorrow, they left tonight, and we'll have e-filing in Odyssey and Enterprise. And by the way, this all paper will be gone, it is not a choice. This man dated by the state court system. We've been preparing for over a year, so we believe it's gonna go smoothly. Fingers crossed, there's always some hiccups, but staff is this is a place where this experience already occurred. I work in a place, why not here, where it's already occurred. And so far, so good. Trains involved, there's a lot of nervousness with my staff. Because I used to point on the paper, but I have a lot of faith in them, the transitions are gonna go well. It will reduce the cost of paper, we've already used a lot of the rest of your thing, like electronically, so we never need attorneys, so we can get paper copies, there will now be no paper anything. So our goals, we get that in place, have some equipment for it, have the IT of the city, assist the IT with the state up here. You know, transfer and put on in files. Another thing I want to highlight is our community service program. Somebody named this kid was gone for medical reasons for a while, but she's run back. That program helps reduce a jail cost. It also helps keep her in town and Jerry's back, so it increase because while she was gone. Geez, those was nice enough. The cover of the by day, she really appreciated it, but now we got to sing on there for days and weekends for the play. I'd also note that Jerry does fingerprints, which is a station over there by the door. Those law enforcement, this will find that and the court is not like to do it. There is penalty legislation that makes it more clear to the court, but it's kind of gray. And also a new announcement is Jerry is gonna be trained in how to give a shot with your best versus defenders which we link into our community court, part of our female court, that's requested of the prosecutor. And that is not the parameters for current work funding from the state, so we're trying to roll that in. As you all know, there's a lot of shotgun, they have three issues in the city. We'd like to get some of the first timers at the very, very beginning, so we can find a way to keep them coming seven times. It's the best way, but yeah, so that's the goal there. So she's busy. So there are mandatory duties. Obviously, we do every day. Yes, most of all, proving matters are filed with us, all civil matters that are filed with us. And the filings are increasing. Like if you're leash chief, we're probably happy about that. Our job is to handle everything enough. We're happy to do so. Hope it's going smoothly, our calendar is getting a bit larger. That's all we have, just a question.
One little question. So you said you had one who slipped back from your program, but I'm curious, that of how many?
Graduated about twenty people in general.
Okay, so one out of twenty, that's pretty good.
There's there's no such thing as a perfect one.
Right.
The best way to look at it is that individual was here for a couple of drug issues. And I'm not trying to make money, but new offenses, you do without. It's right without license, which is something we try to help with or in the program. But they they don't get the license after many attempts to test, and they were contracted. But not drunk. So.
That's good.
Hey, wanna look at that? I I haven't heard much the last few weeks about the Washington Fire Association mandatory reduced case count for public defenders. What's the new news on that? Or is any?
Silence is.
Silence is news. And you know. State Supreme Court is very divided. I went to office in the fall, which includes state judges, state court judges and the superior court judges, fellow judges and the state. State Supreme Court judges were clearly extremely divided. There was some friction between them at conference. Not that issue, they're supposed to come out, decision last fall. Silence. Around February, silence. So. They made those.
So business as usual, then? And.
Nothing's changed at the moment. A lot of pressure to not change the guidelines for public defenders. And I think one of the best presentations was made by Open Hagen, Oscar. And put it out. To them, what about the victims?
Right.
What's gonna happen with them? If you change the case loads, some of the public defenders, Oscars be forced to dismiss cases. And with some license, hey, the cops, they don't, that's seen have a big impact on them. So right now, they've done that.
No news is good news.
That's real bad so far.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Why is it my idea that it's? Next up, thank you.
As Mark mentioned, much of what we do have that especially both big projects are the usual, their annual development of the budget, the completion of the annual financial report, shepherding the audit through its process. So a few highlights of some projects that I think might be of interest. We want to focus on better utilizing the Tyler system. So in a couple of those areas, budget is one. When I came, we were using a separate software and cost about fifty thousand dollars. We cut that down to just use. But we're not still fully using it as far as the development goes. We're out in Excel spreadsheets. We forecast personnel in Excel, we bring it into pivot tables. It's very dependent on individual staff members' knowledge. And my concern always is if we have turnover, that knowledge then leaves. We need to use the system, so we're gonna train up and better use it for position budgeting and having that system. So that's one aspect of using Tyler better. As part of our contract with them, we get three spots to their annual conference. We're sending one person from finance. My hope is he'll be able to really work with some of the consultants there on using budget and attempt some of those sessions. The other area is in our procurement area. So through the purchasing process, we're going to be bringing some policies related to purchasing. Kind of attached to this, it's really training our staff so that we have one purchasing and contracts manager. And sometimes things, to one person, they just get bogged down there. So better training our staff to be able to go out and make purchases following the thresholds, really empowering them to have those tools to do that. Part of it also is using the purchase order module in Tyler. So currently, if we make a PO, we do it out in Excel, we give it a number, but it doesn't actually function in the finance system so that we encumbered. So in other words, we might put PO in for twenty-five thousand dollars, and then that will encumber it out of budget. So people don't have to kind of do that math in their head and say, well, we have these three POs out there. So really, we don't have that much budget. So we want to use the software better. So that's all kind of related to the Tyler software and system. Some other highlights of this, as you know, IT is with finance, so we really want to work that along with kind of the purchasing pieces. Finance, IT, how does it really function? What are our service levels? We'll be talking with you more about that in the presentation on May fifth. So that's something we're looking at, kind of our investment in technology, how we're operating with that. Another piece of metal is of interest to you is our business and occupation path system. So we're gonna be looking at the software we currently have. So that's a separate software outside of Tyler. So staff are doing quite a bit of. So staff are doing quite a bit of manual work to get the information that our businesses send us into that software. It doesn't allow for a business to do anything online or really efficient. And I was wanting to say, currently businesses have to complete that either by hand or uh. Well, really, that's the only option, print it out, leave it by hand, mail it in and send us a check, and that's just not very. Friendly to the year twenty twenty five and all of the technology, so we wanna get that brought up so it's easier. We're asking people to pay a tax, I believe it should be more straightforward and easy. Uh allowing them to submit a payment online and complete it. So we want to either get our current vendor to be able to allow that, or we need to look at some other options to do that. That's probably the biggest complaint I hear, and I, I really agree with that, it's not an efficient system. We also are hoping that either through our current system, or if we go to a new software, that we can do some monitoring. Um send some reminder letters such as, you know, you come, you filed for a city business license, but you didn't return a, a B N O tax form. You know, checking in with people, that was something we heard through that financial sustainability passports that, you know. Make it fair, um told everybody accountable, so we're going to for sure look at that. And the last thing I'll share with you, uh and when we were developing the twenty twenty five budget. Particularly in our enterprise funds, water, sewer storm, one of the things that we noticed was the credit card fees that were charged are pretty high. We also, another concern I'm given often by citizens is that um fee that's charged by our third-party vendor. When we were at the Finance Officers Association Conference, talked with a couple of vendors where. There are some other options, and so we're going to explore that, not gonna make any promises, but I feel like. Uh it's uh would be good for our citizens and good for the city, which is also good for them. Is if we're not having to pay as much in our transaction fees, and if we can get that fee reduced or eliminated. That people are charged for using their credit card, I think that would be a big win for our citizens and us as the city, so we're going to. That's on the work plan to look at this year also, and so I'm, I'm hopeful in our initial talks. Uh that we can possibly get that going, so along with just then the normal work that we do. That those are some of the highlights of the twenty twenty five work plan.
Questions?
I agree with the B N O tax, it's very cumbersome of the current program.
It's, it's labor intensive for our staff as well.
I imagine it is, when you're getting these individually, just at random.
Sort of.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
We're still using a separate old computer for that, we upgrade that, we remember we were using a really old computer for that.
Yeah, internal A S P program.
Yes, we have a new software, but it, we're, I'm still wanna have, that's what I mean, you know, come up to a better.
Modern standard.
Yeah. Not being able to complete that online, having to submit a check, it's, it's archaic.
And it's easy to forget about it.
It is, very.
I think frankly, we just looked at a replacement to the A S P, we did look at expanding the services we were providing a, at the time when. It's all vision now, so like.
That's the stuff.
Now. A little more effort, a little more due diligence, I think we could have looked at it, expanding the service to better meet some of the goals that I was just referring to.
Well, that's the hope, that we can either get our current vendor to do that, or find somebody to, enough cities. Certainly the state, they're kind of on a different platform, but enough cities um. Have a B N O tax system that I'm convinced we can get something to work for.
State definitely knows if you forget to pay them, I'll tell you that. Um on the. On the B N O, so Tyler, Tyler does not have a, a module for that. That's shocking.
Uh yeah.
We were city Tyler city software.
And they specialize really in this whole, uh financial software.
And I don't, I'm not, I don't know in other states that B N O is a common thing, so it, it. It may not be something that is enough demand for them.
Right. And other questions, I guess?
Oh, just looking forward for you to find someone that can eliminate those extra fees that people have to pay when they have to pay their water bill. That would be awesome.
Nice one, thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Good evening. Our twenty twenty five uh work plan, um as, as it was in the past, always includes our rete, our recruitment and retention, that's so important to us. Uh we're actually doing very well last year, we didn't lose a single officer to another agency or department, so. Our numbers are just about up there, they're actually hiring a new officer. Giving this month, then we'll have a more vacancy after that, so just look forward to. Keep um keep, keep the, keep our information updated with C J P C and keep public informed when we have enough things, so we. Know it sooner than it is later, it's been like rough. Three years since we've been fully staffed, and so we actually achieved that this year, and so. We're kind of excited because I will bring forth uh new programs that we can bring to the community, staff and stuff. Um last year, we developed an officer wellness program, um that's also a Waspic standard for our um accreditation. So we developed a, a committee, I'm on that one, some, a sergeant and a few officers. Um so we have quarterly meetings, um and uh we're continuing to develop that this year. Um there's wellness, wellness apps for the officers that we can uh get, um it's been tied into. Um and we're moving on, upgrading our fitness and it's the fact is, so. Uh looking forward to more movement on our officer wellness program this year. And there's always um employee development, it's always huge, we're, we're always developing um our, our officers, younger officers and our. Uh supervisors, we gotta think about the future. Um we're uh see get this year, um we wanna get all our sergeants up to a little middle management certification with C J's seat. Um that is mandated by accreditation due to the structures of our departments, so. Just looking forward, always just trying to get um officers more well-developed and grown up a bit to take on a future. We can maybe ship. Um so new things with community relations this year that we wanna do, um well, we want to um. We wanna team up with a, a C S O this year and do another citizens academy, we think we can provide. Hmm a lot more content with that, they have programs that we don't, and we can make it more of a, a robust um citizens academy this year, so we're working on that. I'm hoping to get that out like a big. Late summer, maybe fall times like that, as soon as we can strategize with them. Um also the National Night Out, last year was the first time that we did a nice National Night Out and. Quite a while, I didn't even know how many years, so that was a big success, and we are hoping to. Do a little bit, something different this year and do something more local within the city, because we did it on. Our district was South Park, Arcadia last year, so I'd like for something close in town, downtown this year. And hopefully, you know, team up with a basic accounting again, local fire department, have a national night, national night out here downtown.
We'd like to expand uh city departments, really, the highlight, city services, putting more people together, ready.
And uh and with the, with the possibility of us being post-staff this year, I'd like to. Um implement a foot or a bike patrol um downtown area that if uh we can have the. Number of officers to come to the streets. Sometimes we're down to two officers and we don't have the ability to stray away from our vehicles very long, you're partnering itself. You know, running halfway, halfway around the city to hit your car to get to your partner or somebody. If our numbers uh dictate that we can, I'd like to institute a, a more formal foot or a bike patrol. Um predominantly in the downtown area, but the bike patrol could, could go further around the city. Um and as always, every year, twice for toss drive and our, on our shop, the cop will be inside we attend. Um this year is a big, big year for our accreditation maintenance, this is gonna be year three out of four that we have to prove. Uh when it comes to our year three accreditation, we have a total of a hundred and forty-six standards now, over eighteen chapters. And. For most of these accreditation standards, you have to prove, show the proofs within the last two years of that accreditation cycle. So this is the first year that we can probably get ninety, ninety-five percent of our work done. Because it's um, we only have one more year to go, it's in the last two years, so we can really make leaps and bounds. Um towards reaccreditation twenty twenty seven by getting a lot of this work done upfront, I've been on. Been on the receiving end where, you know, you have to push it out later, and that's not really. Uh uh a great time, you know, because you're really struggling to get all this done, it's, it's a very tedious process of starting this. Accreditation maintenance this year and get basically around ninety-nine, ninety-five percent, and we got all next year to. Finish up, I'm gonna go on there, we can be ready for grade recognition twenty twenty seven. Um technology and equipment, um we have a lot of things coming out this year. Uh first, we're, we're looking at implementing the online reporting, reporting program, uh the budget is already there for it, it was. One of the budget requests I did for last year, um that'll consist of someone being able to go to the same websites and. And uh. Hit a stat and be able to file, please, or for certain types of circumstances, not all of them, but things uh that, you know. You don't have a suspect, or if you just, you know, maybe it's a car accident that they wanna report, they could report that online. And then what would happen with that report is it would get assigned a case number, it would go to one of my sergeants. Uh then they would, they would look at the report, then they would dictate the routing for that particular report, whether it needed to go detectives, whether it's just for information. Or it was just follow-up, so um just trying to reach out different avenues. Where citizens can contact us and report. Um anything to us, you know, um. When we go to a lot of, you know, you hear a lot of people just not reporting crimes, just they wanna call, I didn't think of it, so I'm just hoping that other avenue. For them to, to get a contact. Lock installation should have started last week, hopefully, um I have not gotten an update, they were supposed to start with cameras up. Eighteen. And. Follow up with them and see if they started yet or not, I mean, they didn't, um so we recontacting them and seeing what would, what the issue was. But we should see that fairly quick now. Um we're also looking at creating an S P D Instagram and a Facebook account. It's important to get. You know, um what's going on out in the city out there as soon as we can. You know, maybe city, safety issues, traffic issues, but you know, if we got a road closed, we wanna be able to get that up to the public as soon as possible. So they're aware, you know, they can go there in that area, or when there was a serious incident, or something, we can start. Tell people what's going on and where to go, instead of them just showing up and going wherever they want to go, so we can kind of. Dictate route them to particular locations, because that helps us when we're on the scene and we're dealing with these situations, because we already have a lot going on, we don't need. People, outsiders, you know, rushing into this thing, confusing it, we don't know who we are, and then it takes away from our task at hand, so we. Start getting out the word early on this type of situations, getting people to the right place for, for reunification. And also, we wanna thought of good things too, it's not all just about, you know, avoid this, or you know, um do this and that, but we wanna, we wanna exemplify. Um you know, our, our achievement through the police department, and I wanna show, you know, what these officers are doing out there, so I think expect also. There could be some positive things on those accounts as well, that you perceive. Also, we've had a, this year we're getting a lot of new equipment. Uh regarding firearms, we're getting uh new pistols. Um with our E S, we're running out of tights, um and we're getting the new tasers, and we're also getting uh. A few more less lethal shotguns, and we've also got um our new rifles uh coming in, and while they are. We're just getting ready to roll out all these, these all have, they all have to be retrained on these, so it takes a little time to get the training days in line. So they can be familiar with their new equipment, some of the equipment we have just was in. It, it just wasn't functional, some of it just wasn't functioning anymore, tasers were just. I'm looking anymore, they were very qualified, some of, ten of our rifles, we got those back in two thousand and seven. So those are extremely old rifles, we've been having to repair them over the last uh. Quite a few years, just to keep them up and going, they were never meant to last that long. So everyone's gonna be situated with a, a new rifle or some new rifle that was modified, they're all gonna be the same. And these rifles that they're gonna be issued, they're gonna qualify for, especially last, they were ten years, so it's a great investment, you know. It, it's, it's a liability issue, if you put, you know, weapon into their hand, and. Uh you know, it's not functioning correctly, or it's having problems, and we're fixing it. Um most of our officers see the issue, we just wanna give them the best equipment possible, they're all very good job.
Speaking of, of, of that, the criminal justice trainings today, I think banned that, was it a three twenty P three, the six hour? Three twenty, yes.
There was, there was a three twenty, there, there's an M eighteen and an M nineteen they banned, because they were having actual discharges. Um when they were just in the officer's holster, they, they wouldn't even touch the weapon, just somehow, whatever the officer was doing at that time. They done discharges, and then one of the incidents is, one of the officers was shot in the leg while searching a vehicle, I believe, so. So yeah, those, those are not allowed on the C J T C campus anymore, um I, I ordered that study to my, all my firearms. Uh instructors, and so we're not gonna have any of those around us as well, so.
Yeah, we talked a lot about that in the mayor's conference, and then today I actually saw an email saying that they've actually banned them now, that. You know, we have any of those or not, but they explained that, that guns were going off by themselves, they were dropping them, and they were going off, and. And I think I did hear the officer shot himself in the leg, but.
Yeah, and six hour was uh settled back for.
Well, they, I, they said there was, there was some arguments over that, that didn't happen that way, but they did a lot of testing, and yeah, it did happen that way.
And uh last um. Last year, we had a um peer review of our records and evidence. Um divisions, um we had a, some very nice people come, they, they have their own companies, learn its law enforcement records. Network, they came in and assessed our um records and evidence um departments and. Gave us some good pointers on what we can do to be uh. Um we can get it organized, we can have better um programs in place, so we're planning on implementing. Uh a lot of their suggestions this next year, uh one of the big ones is we're gonna go paperless. We have the systems already in place to go paperless, so it's just getting those, get everyone trained up and getting, getting everyone's mind around.
So. Like you'd have like a little iPad out in the field and type of the report on that.
They can already do that on the computers up there, and they can submit their documents to the jail online, they can submit documents to dispatch online. They can submit their reports um online to supervisor, so and. And we have the, the systems in place to hold store all that, Spelman can hold all our reports and. Works and our pictures, and then G-Tech, which holds our body cam, all our body cams and. Video information, video evidence, we get many scenes, and so we have the, we have the storage capacity right now, but it's just. Getting things in line and switching to go.
Alright, questions for Kate?
Yes.
Pretty exciting.
We, we mentioned that a little bit earlier, particularly in the police department, the cost for re-improvement and bringing somebody on, you know, we talked about. Um entry level, and they go through the academy and build training, it's, you know, ten months or so before somebody's out on the street, so. Really important to focus on retention.
And a lot of that is employee development, and giving them the opportunities to do other things in the department, you know, so.
So many things that tie into that, just having good equipment, making sure you don't have faulty guns, I mean, you wanna stay where you have good cards and you have good equipment. And I also think that, that like the Instagram account might be fun, because um you could humanize yourselves there, right? And then the community feels like they know you and they feel comfortable with you, and I think that's a good thing too, other than just, you know, reporting.
And when we're fully staffed, I'd really like to see the bicycle with the patrol, that'd be great.
And when we're police staff, I'd really like to see the bicycle with the patrol, that'd be great addition to downtown.
The citizen academy was very popular, very well attended, and a, and a lot of people really praised it, I mean, I think Melissa and I went to all of them. They were, they were pretty fun too, so we had a good time talking that.
I think, I think it's not gonna be the same thing where we vegetated every year, we wanna continue to develop it and show different aspects of things, and. That's where we do, show us how it helps out, and as well as.
It was nice, we had police and judges and prosecutors and public defenders, it was, it was really informative. Cool. It looks like Jay might have some time up, huh?
Yeah.
He's looking back, is there another Jay back there? Oh, I'm looking at the, I'm just going in order, so I'm sorry. Mark's the boss back there, you can.
Good evening, uh Jay Harris, your Public Works Director, so uh Public Works, uh the current overview real quick. We added two departments in twenty twenty-five, uh or three, actually, got parks, recreation and facilities. Are now in with streets, wastewater, water, stormwater and equipment maintenance rental, that's EM and R. So uh we're busy, we got a lot of, of different divisions within Public Works. Uh going to the six-year work plan, so this is an updated plan, uh. I think manager night, we start preparing these, was it twenty twenty-three or was it twenty twenty-two, might have been twenty-two. Yeah, anyways, this has been an update for a few years, um I've been adding things as uh they come up. And then taking things off here as when they're completed, right? So um a lot of public works, we wanna go from reactive to proactive maintenance. Um do what wants to do and write is what we say, might take us a little more time, but we don't wanna go back to things, right? So um with that, uh one of the first things is our equipment maintenance rental. Uh we want to uh complete a study, and that's gonna be in twenty twenty-six. To look at some of these higher pieces of equipment, the cost of them, and uh the lifespan of them, like we have a vacuum truck replacement. Come out in some years, that's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment.
More than that.
The last one was about three fifty.
Wow, that was six hundred.
And I don't think so. But uh it was expensive, right, and the guys use it all the time, you see that, we have a, a second one also. But we wanna make sure that the rates being charged for the equipment, EM and R, um when the street department needs to use the vacuum truck. They rent it from EM and R, and so we charge them by the hour and all that, that funds that machine. And the maintenance of that machine and the replacement of that machine too, right? So we need to work on that, it's similar to like the water CIP and the sewer CIP, all of those things. But we need one through EM and R, this will be more robust, we're gonna be working on that. Um you see the transportation benefit district on here, um that is an important part of our action plan. You know, with it or without it, right, that we, we need to get that resolved. Um and uh voters, obviously, uh it counts matter or counts driven, right? Um and then uh the last one on proactive maintenance right now is uh. The, the developing the schedule to replacing uh aging machinery and equipment at the sewer lift station and treatment plants. We have a lot of machines, uh these plants are getting a little older, and the lift stations are, are aging. And uh we just need to keep on top of, it's like new police cars, new guns, same theory. That um we can't have a failure in these systems, uh we recently had a failure, one month and a half ago or so. Winter storm, power outage, uh the generator kicked on, but it didn't switch over. Luckily, Brent Armstrong lives fine, that is from the plant, he's down there turning dials, do what he can to get it going. Um they've actually, a, a gate closed, we flooded our disinfection area, it burned up some equipment. Anyways, we got things going, there's about a half hour of treated water that was undisinfected that went into Oakland Bay, unfortunately. But um that particular incident um would be, this replaced aging machinery, it wasn't aging machinery. Although the transfer switch is a little in question right now, and we are getting some replacement parts of that, and probably gonna get. That's the generator transfers back and forth between shore power and generator power. Um so we're looking at that, that we, that's the core, and it wasn't working quite right. But um anyways, luckily, because of our staff getting there, turning valves, doing things. We really minimized the, the incidents, and we're coming up with more robust plans to circumvent that type of failure. So um it's a good thing. Our employee development, that's really important, a succession planning, right? Who's replacing me in the future, uh those sorts of things, and so every position, we wanna make sure. That we have a supervisor and an assistant supervisor, the assistant should be learning the role down the road, and when people go on vacation. The assistant takes over if the supervisor leaves, and that sort of thing. Um and then with that is just increasing our knowledge, skills and abilities. This is online training, this classroom coursework, um that sort of thing, to make sure our people have the latest technology. And the latest equipment uh to do their jobs better, right? And um so some of the things on the current stats column over there, I wanted to sort of give an update of where we are, because this has been on there for a while. Um so we have a weekly uh safety tailgate meetings with all the field workers. Public Works, uh all hands safety training meetings, we have a, a, a lot of those. We're actually gonna im- implement more like Public Works meetings, where it's just Public Works, not the whole city. But just down there, and we're actually working on a meeting room over there right now, where we're gonna have inside meetings, because. Here before, we, we could do that outside, we go over the loop field or whatever, it has to be nights, right? Well, during the winter, it's hard for us to have all staff meetings down there, really hard to grab all the trucks, come over here, have an hour meeting. And then everyone goes back, right, so we're working on some things over there. Um uh budgets uh that we wanna make sure uh that uh we have a professional training plan in each budget. Uh cycle, so we have enough money in the budget, that in your performance review for each year. We say what your coursework's gonna be for that year, then we check back to make sure you got it completed, that sort of thing, and then adequately budgeted for that. Um emergency management, um we've made some progress on it. Um we haven't made as much as I wanted to get done, but it is moving along pretty good. So uh some of the goals here are to uh build, better build a more accurate GIS system. So that's a waterline break in the middle of the night, okay, I shouldn't be rifling through looking for math for all the valves are. I need to know where they are, I'm the first responder, I need to be there, I need to have an accurate system, right? And so with the AMI project, we're actually the field surveying the whole water system right now, so that'll be done this year. Um I got the emergency uh fuel plant done, we're pretty set up on that. Um we have a, a five hundred gallon emergency fuel tote, so we can move fuel around from our two thousand gallon tanks. We have two thousand diesel, two thousand, we can get the fuel over to a treatment plant or a lift station to, to run the backup generator, that sort of thing. Um we're gonna be working with the storm system later soon in, in GIS. Uh with the call plan update, we're gonna, when we go out for that, part of the consultant services are gonna be to get our storm system. A better in GIS, so um that should work out pretty good. Um the emergency power generation plan was completed this year, um it shows that we have old generators. And we need to be budgeting for the replacement of newer generators. The generator here for this building is twenty plus years old and twenty-five, you know. We can't run them, you know, and it probably only has two hundred hours on it, right? But then if it does break, trying to get parts for it for a twenty-five year old generator, it's a problem, right? Then you end up having to buy a new generator, well, we need to plan for some of these replacements.
I just saw that for the first time the other day, it's the biggest a car.
Yeah, it, they're big, they're big, run, you know, uh all the services and all the requirements of this building. Uh it needs to be pretty big, you look at the one of the wastewater plant though, it's big, it's a semi truck, I mean, it's huge, yeah. So um. The uh incident command training, we're working on that, a bunch of people have completed a bunch of coursework on that. Uh the goal is to check off more people this year, uh to get the training behind them. Uh that just helps when you go to an emergency forms, processes, chain of command. Of that sort of thing, emergency operations uh center flow chart has been done. Um the city emergency communications plan is being worked on, um the water distribution plan um isn't. Quite put together on exactly where, when, why, all that, but we do have the budget this year. In, in the budget to buy an emergency of water filtration trailer, which is big that if we lose power to the wells. Or in a large earthquake, they could sand up and the pumps don't work, um we're going to back up water sources creep. And, and that sort of thing, drawing water out, treating it, um people need a gallon a day of water to survive. You can go quite some day uh without food, but you need water pretty soon. So we wanna get one of those trailers, figure out a real central spot with a goal, probably have a few more, so people are walking, they can walk. Get some water and get back home again, if the roads aren't possible, right? So I wanna do some tabletop exercises uh with other agencies, uh Mason County, I've been working with uh Public Works up there on that. Uh work on the uh emergency management plan and the coop, the community operations plan, we got a good draft going around through the departments. And then it'll be coming this year to council for approval, and then the emergency management webpage is the last thing, uh it's been completed. And it's actually posted, but it isn't easy to find right now on our website, I, I gotta talk to Mary about that. So that's good, really good resources on the emergency method webpage. So public outreach, uh we need to get out and just make sure people know what public works is, and you know. How we keep this city running for them, um that we got some information we have else we wanna do. Uh we do some classroom and group tours, we can do more um of that. Uh typically have an admin assistant helping me with this, this type of outreach, we show up, go to the high school. Give a presentation for a half hour or so, uh we've gone up to the la- library every month, and it's called Touch Truck. We've been taking different things and up there, that program's worked out real good. Um and then also public events, uh we all can get out there a little more, you know, uh police, public works, that sort of thing, and a few more community events. And just have a booth, some information, and show some cool things, talk to people where their water comes from, and that sort of thing. Um and then our public works homepage, you know, uh project updates have gotten better, we're doing good on that. Uh waterline flushing, we don't have the routes on there all the time, that sort of thing. Uh the street sweeping map and uh is on there, and the snow plowing and sandy roots was just recently updated on there, so pretty good. Um so then the environment, we wanna minimize negative impacts on the environment, um resulting from our activities. So the wastewater treatment plant failure, it's a failure, right? Uh we weren't cited by the Department of Ecology, because it was an act of dog, this was, and we had backup plans. Things went wrong though in that plan, we need to fix those, but we still had an impact, right? For a half hour, we had an impact on Oakland Bay, um and we, we wanna make sure we're not doing that, right? Um and then like our stormwater program, um we're, our phase two stormwater permit. We keep getting new requirements every year, so you're gonna see a lot of different things coming out of our, our stormwater program.
Is that gonna be upgrading what we've already have, because the developments now will have to keep the water on their own site, so is this sort of? Existing infrastructure? That we have to upgrade?
Yeah, 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 our existing infrastructure, we also have to make sure that these private um stormwater facilities are being maintained appropriately too, that's.
We're monitoring discharges from uh, you know, uh private businesses, like a radiator shop, for example. That it, they're uh when they're draining fluids and that sort of thing, they're being discharged appropriately. Um we're required to go to each business on a rotating plan of about four years. We gotta hit every one of them, we keep going back, keep going back, and fill out surveys and ask you questions and look at the site. So the stormwater permitting lines is big, um we uh just, we have a Kenny Olberg's stormwater person right now. Uh he's also an engineering technician, uh we are looking in, in the stormwater rates, there was another FTE in there. And so uh we put out a job posting, and we're gonna be interviewing here in the next uh week or so. Uh qualified candidates, candidates, we gotta get turnout for that, so uh. Anyways, that's what this number three was on environment, uh that's the MPDS, that's two permit, that's stormwater. So technology, so. It's amazing when I started and what we have now, uh it's absolutely incredible, you know, of the stuff we've had way back when. And what we're doing now, so um a lot of it is our EAM uh system, that's uh enterprise asset management. That uses GIS, fire hydrants over there, it's in GIS, EAM grabs that fire hydrant number. Says, hey, that thing was put in in nineteen fifty-two, the last time you were there was two years ago. You, here's a work order, you need to get back to that hydrant again, and you need to check the seals, might need to be painted, whatever. So that's what EAM does for us, and uh so we're slowly implementing the work order system. Uh in EM and R, uh they're doing all the fleet work orders in EAM, uh streets is probably sixty to seventy-five percent. And then uh water's probably a fifty fifty right now, parks and recreation has not started. So we're working on getting this work order system, and then we don't forget about things too. So that's that faucet that freezes over there, if you don't go do something in September or October, right? Those are really important, that's proactive maintenance, that's key to me from bringing a plumber up to fix it next spring. Or worse, you have to flood a building or something, right? So uh walk by radio reads already on, where AMI is going in, we're at probably a couple hundred meters now, getting close to that.
Seventy lastly.
Yeah, they're doing fifteen a day, so we're about uh two hundred meters of three thousand something, right? So we're making headway there, um so that will be done this year, that will be big. And then that's uh drive-by radio, walk-by radio read, we're gonna be go to fixed base radio read uh a year or two out. That would be more of an antenna based system uh that is run up in the customer service department. So then policies and procedures, we're working on the engineering standards manual, we're gonna have that back to you guys. Uh we keep working on SOPs, Mark got us last year and said, hey, update these SOPs, we would have did a bunch. I'm assuming he's gonna give another directive this year for another batch of them, but um anyways, they're, they're good to follow the SOPs. And uh. Then just templates, forms, that sort of thing, uh we're continually updating those, most of that's private development. And those are found on our website for the developers to use. So that's my update.
Question, I didn't see anything in here, or I missed it about doing smoke tests, you know, that a priority still, making sure that we're not putting stormwater in our sewer system. But I didn't see anything in here, the priority.
Yeah, so that's uh I and I uh testing in a, in different basins, and that's uh influence infiltration. And that project is scheduled for next year, I'm pretty sure, we're gonna do basin six, I think is what it was. So we have that scheduled for next year to start on that.
We were talking about testing, like private, making sure that we don't have stormwater going in the sewer.
Downspouts. I still take advantage of that when it, you know, redevelopment, redevelopment of buildings or structures, whether. They're tying in, or stormwater improvements, and we'll, we'll check those off as they become available, but. We'll have to take basin projects as a whole, and really incorporate a more intensive. And testing and, and uh and investigation, it's like that, but we take advantage of that.
Yeah, because refresh my memory about the gallons that we use through our sewer system in the summer and in the winter time, that's huge.
You know, we go from oh, under two million gallons a day treating sewer during the summer to peaking at sometimes eight. Nine million gallons a day, but we can handle that kind of sewer going through there, but that's because of pipe joints. Groundwater going in during the winter, it takes a while for the groundwater to come up and start running in, those are just old pipes. That can be a main line, or that could be a service line with someone's house, right? Well, on that service line role, you also have people that have connected their uh building roof drains to it. And so when you do a smoke test, you go to a manhole, they blow the smoke in, and where it comes out over there, you know, it's called a cross connection. To the storm system, and you don't want that, or to the sewer system, I'm sorry, storm connected to sewer. So uh anyways, we'll be doing some of that uh next year.
Are we, and one last question, sorry, no, everybody else asked a question, that basins that are left required by ecology to be replaced or changed out? Is there like two left now, was there, because basin three was the biggest one, right? Or basin, there's basin four. I've been here too long.
Yeah, I think we have four, five and six left, six was the smallest, you can kind of pick that off, whatever call, but we still have four and five after that.
Four's the big one, right? Big one.
Or is I think Mount New?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
No, east side of uh, Illinois.
Not as important, but like three was downtown of the water table, so that's why.
It's older down here, it's up on that, you're right, you're talking thirties, forties.
Also the soils that they're infiltrating well, so groundwater is about the same.
So what's our timeline to finish those up, ten years or?
Yeah, it's, I have it, I have all of that on my six-year C I P, then the bottom of six years, I have the other projects that we just haven't got to yet, and that's some of those. But uh those type of projects are grant eligible for some of them, but we do need rain money, right, for those also. Matching money.
Any question? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's how you make a note, okay, okay, good.
Or just one thing about street sweeping, when we go sand, sand hits ground, goes onto the snow and the ice, whatever. Then it can lay there for some days, right? We do have two street sweepers and we really try to get out, get that sand up. Now, if there's gonna be another snowfall event though, you might see it there for some days. Cause we're, there's no reason to go pick it up if you're just gonna go put it back down again. Hopefully, keep your fingers crossed, we should be done with snow this year, but now I probably do.
See a lot of birds, a lot of flowers.
It's almost March.
I've seen March snow, but uh.
We got some good wind last night though, that kept us busy. Thank you.
I was gonna say, council, we have another thirty-minute presentation, anybody want a five-minute break?
Sure.
Just making sure, we can get another thirty minutes, okay, uh, five-minute recess.
All right.
Oh, hello. Um, yeah, I wanted to introduce Julianne Gale and her group from the Cedar Stewards of Mason County. Osmic. Um, they got a grant from the Commerce to make a presentation about homelessness in Mason County. They gave this presentation to the to the county, now they're giving it to for us in the city. So I invited them here and their testimony and I'd like to, I'm just proud of the the youth. Um, at at Cedar, I tune up coming here and making their voice heard and to share their presentation and the facts that they found, so thank you very much for coming.
Thank you so much for having us, um, I'm Julianne Gale. Um, I'm with Mason County Public Justice and Cedar Stewards of Mason County, or Osmic for short. Is our youth civic engagement and leadership development. I'm just gonna invite each of the Cedar High School students to to say their names. And um, like Miguel said, we got a grant from the Department of Commerce to make sure that there is uh public participation in the comprehensive plan update. Uh, especially from vulnerable populations and overgrown communities, the kinds of folks who don't always get their homes hurt. And you know, I've been in your, some of your city council meetings, it's been very contentious in terms of the housing crisis. And so we didn't want to just focus on the problems, we wanted to really be solutions focused and talk about. How the comp plan is a huge opportunity to solve some of the problems that you hear over and over uh residents coming and playing. All right, so the, there are updated requirements in the comprehensive plan housing element. And this is because compared to the last time we did a comp plan update, House Bill twelve twenty passed and it has new requirements to handle housing. So for example, number one.
Number one document, housing needs at each income level.
And you might wonder, what does each income level mean? Well, there's a handy dandy chart from the Department of Commerce um describing what it means to document what the needs are at each income level.
Number two, identify and fund new racial disparities.
And what that means is looking at racially disparate impacts, displacement and exclusion in housing.
Number three, provide for existing and projected needs.
And that means you need to have options in the comp plan to address barriers to housing availability at each of those same income levels.
Number four, identify sufficient land capacity.
And number five.
Urban area saver.
We don't have time to cover all of these things, this is a summary from the Department of Commerce, the summary. We're gonna focus just on one, two and three in this presentation because that's the thing that we think we have the best uh information about. So number one, documenting housing needs. Um, I want to say that a lot of the data that we have will be countywide and that is because. When you look at American Community Survey data from the U S Census, we wanted to have the most recent available data. But one year A C S data is only statistically relevant if you have at least fifty or sixty thousand people, which the city's showing is far, far below that. And so to promote currency as well as because our grant is specifically around the whole county. Um, and because many data sources only be county level and not city level, we focus. The the data comes from there and as much as possible, we hold city specific things and if there's more city specific stuff we want, we can get the C O B grant. So this is from the Department of Commerce, this is their most recent report on Mason County about what's changed since the last comp plan. And how are we doing it? How are we doing it? Reducing housing insecurity? Reducing housing disparities, increasing housing production and housing diversity, meaning different types of housing. And how are we doing a supportive housing affordability? And you can see unfortunately, since the last comp plan, Mason County has gotten worse, a lot worse or a little bit worse. In every single indicator except two, but it's like, hey, at least two are going well. Unfortunately, because of government bureaucracy, it takes a long time for these charts to be approved. And so this chart actually relies on twenty twenty-two data. And the percentage of households experiencing cost burn, which is slightly improved, actually got significantly worse in twenty twenty-three and I'll share that later in the minute. And then the total housing unit production, that indicator is also out of date because housing production dropped after twenty twenty-one, especially for multi-chaos. Um, so what housing are we required to plan for in this conflict? Now, this is countywide, uh, and the exact numbers may be slightly different because this is from the most recent commerce report and things got voted on, but this is the rough scale. Um, and it's countywide because the county and the city have to agree on where is the new housing gonna go? And in many cases, the Growth Management Act is encouraging lack of sprawl and the uh infill development. So that you have increased density in the incorporated cities and V G As and that in the rural areas. Um, so you can see that there are, I just want to point out the, it's divided by income level, which is defined as percent of median family income. And I just wanted to find one of the acronyms here, P S H stands for permanent supportive housing. So for the very low and extremely low income folks, there's two different kinds of housing need. One is permanent supportive housing, that's like the Sheldon Veterans Village. Where you have social services, you have addiction recovery, you have mental health treatment and folks need the extra support to stay out. But there's a lot of folks who are just poor, they don't need mental health treatment, they don't have addiction problems, they just need to positive. And you can see percentage wise, the growth, um, so the blue is twenty twenty-two housing supply. And the purple is what's needed in the next twenty years. And you can see percentage wise, it's really the extremely low income housing level. How were those numbers developed? So this again is borrowed from the Department of Commerce, they took the uh. If we were gonna house everybody who's already here in Mason County and already homeless. So housing for the baseline homeless population. Then housing to eliminate the baseline renter cost burden, meaning renters who are spending more than thirty percent of their income on homeless. And new people moving into the area, so additional housing to accommodate population growth and that leads to the projected that new units needed by the number. This is for actual housing. And then what they call emergency housing, which I wouldn't even really call housing, it's emergency shelters. And so that number comes from baseline homelessness plus all the additional people who are likely to become homeless if current conditions persist. And we don't address these things.
Median housing prices in Mason County have doubled over, or doubled since twenty sixteen. This has left middle-class families with a desk and honestly, as somebody who one day wanna be middle-class and wants to own a. decent home, maybe raise a family, this is scary, I mean, I have, I have a sister who just had a child in her twenties and. It's way too expensive for them probably to afford a house within next twenty years, maybe.
And you might look at this and say, wow, is Mason County different than the surrounding areas? We're actually totally on trend, um, every county in the area is seeing the same kind of rising costs. Now, the rising cost wouldn't be such a big deal if our incomes were rising at the same month. But they're not. This is the Housing Affordability Index. Um, what it means is that when the Housing Affordability Index is one hundred, that a family making the median income. Has exactly enough money qualified for a median home on the market. Um, and for first-time home buyers, it's even upper and so that's generally calculated estimated at seventy percent of median, so that's what the dollar represents. And you can see that in Q one of twenty thirteen, the Housing Affordability Index was two hundred and fifteen. That means that the average family, the median buyer basis, had more than twice the income they needed to buy a median-priced home, it used to be so affordable here. By the time you get to Q one twenty twenty-four, our housing uh affordability index was down to eighty-six. Meaning that the median buyer only has eighty-six percent of the income required to buy a median-priced home. And once again, we're totally on trend with the surrounding areas and even all of Washington. So what about the folks who already own a home? The previous data was the need for people trying to buy, what if you already have? So unfortunately, this is the bad news I was telling you about ahead of time. Um, for folks, you can see that from twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, uh, the housing cost burden was already high and it's increasing. More than one in three Mason County households with a mortgage are cost burdened, meaning spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And approximately one in seven are spending more than half their income on housing. And even if your house is totally paid off or you bought it in cash. There are still twenty-two percent of Mason County households that are cost burdened or were in twenty twenty-three, I'm sure it's worse now. And that's because housing costs, this is U S Census data and they consider your mortgage, your H O A fees, your property taxes, your utilities and the cost burden. And so we have between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, the percentage of Mason County households who don't even have a mortgage. But are still spending more than fifty percent of their income on housing, not including maintenance, that tripled in just one year. Um, I'm gonna, I skipped uh this story, I'm so sorry, so I'm gonna head back to Oliver to share something.
Um, so.
Um, so, Oliver, I live in a house and we're adults and one's a teenager, which is um, and the policy of my grandmother living in one of us. Even though that we make roughly around like ninety thousand dollars per year, we still, by the time we pay all of our bills and, you know, it's really we don't have, we barely make our money to buy groceries for, um, or urgent family, point of emergency.
And I think that gets to one of the points that one of the staff was talking about, that if you don't do the maintenance, things get more expensive. And so it's really unfortunate that we have young people and families in our community that can't afford maintenance, and they're gonna be struggling, and those are the types of folks that were worried about becoming homeless if things don't change. So, it's even worse for renters, uh, in Mason County, uh, in terms of cost burdening than it is for homeowners. Nearly half of all renter households are cost burdened here. And more than a quarter of all renter households are spending more than half their income on housing. And this is actually one where we're not exactly on trend. We're worse. Um, you can, it's pretty obvious for the homeowners that we're higher than the surrounding areas. Uh, and then if you look at the rental units, it's like, oh, maybe we're kind of on trend, except if you look at the severely cost burdened, the folks spending more than half their income on housing for renters, and that's higher than any of the surrounding ones, uh, for which the data is accurate. Um, we also have a policy problem here. We have limited data on rental costs in Mason County. Um, you can see on the right what the census data says about what kinds of homes are renters renting in Mason County. And more than half are single-family homes, um, just like Oliver's statement, for example. But the statewide and national rented rental data doesn't really apply to Mason County because most of the statewide and national rental data, um, that costs in it is based on housing complexes with five or more, or ten or twenty or more units. And that factor is just thirteen percent of rentals in Mason. Plus, sixty-four percent of all Mason County rentals with five-plus units are low-income, which makes our combined median rental costs artificially low. So, it can look like when you get a housing needs assessment from a consultant that is copy-pasting from, you know, national or statewide data, it can look like our rentals are affordable, but we all know, you go on Zillow or you go to Gateway or, you know, you go on Facebook and the rentals aren't actually good. And then furthermore, fair market rent for twenty twenty-four is calculated by HUD using twenty twenty-two ACS Census data. But median rent increased in twenty-two and twenty-three significantly, and so our housing vouchers are really in significant support. This has been a lot of bad news. I know I promised you solutions and just not just bad news, so let's go there for a second. The policy problem, there's limited data on rental costs in Mason County. What can we do? Uh, policy solution one is we can collect meaningful local data. We need the data because you can't solve the problem if you don't know what the problem is. Or you can't argue for increased limits if you can't argue why the data isn't correct. One thing that we're doing, um, as Cosmic, is an affordable housing survey that we hope everybody in Mason County takes, so that we're actually collecting real data on folks in our community. We have about seven hundred and seventy-five people in Mason County taking the survey so far, I would quote one well, and um, I will pass out flyers and send them to you all. Two, it's not enough just to know the data. You have to incorporate it in the policy. And number three, it would be really good to appeal the HUD income limits as recommended in the twenty twenty-two Mason County Housing Needs Assessment. Um, and the process for that, it does cost money, but in the long run, it saves us money because having fewer homeless, uh, or house-insecure people in our community is gonna make it better and less expensive for us all. So, that was housing needs. Now we're on to identifying and undoing racial disparities in housing. So, BIPOC, which stands for Black Indigenous and People of Color, so BIPOC households are more likely to be renters in Mason County and are also more likely to be cost burdened. You can see that, um, white folks are, are eighty-two, white households are eighty-two percent of the, eighty-two percent homeowners, but BIPOC households are only fifty-three percent of homeowners, and this is in Mason County. Uh, the box is Washington State overall. And then in terms of cost burdening, there's seventeen point seven percent, any point difference between the cost burdening for white-led households and BIPOC. Uh, I'm gonna pass it over to Oliver Sully to say something about our racial disparities in housing. Sorry, for making you the people who can be here today, but I gave you permission to tell this story is when he was young, there were racial slurs painted on his door. Um, I know that we want to be a welcoming group. We don't want to have racial disparities in housing. And the comp plan is a perfect opportunity to make those shifts because we, this is our long-term plan. Uh, this is the twenty years. Um, Ender, did I give you earlier, if you wanna share your thoughts on, on why the comp plan is so important?
Yeah, um, hello, again, my name is Ender supporter, and I'm a resident of Elizabeth. Um, I think it is important to consider that the comp plan, uh, includes, um, housing elements and will be effective within the next twenty years. And, um, our plan is goal should be to make sure everyone within the zone has equal access to it.
Um, so when we're talking, this, these graphs are about all of Mason County. But actually, Mason County has concentrations of where BIPOC households are. And the BIPOC households are largely concentrated in Shelton. And so, undoing the racial disparities is a really big job of the city of Shelton. So, this is from the Washington's, uh, State Department of Health's, um, Environmental Health Disparities Map. And so, what it shows is compared statewide, what decile is each census tract in for a percentage of people of color. And so you can see that, um, Shelton is above average in terms of all of, uh, Washington State in terms of percentage of housing. And, um, speaking back to Oliver's point, language diverse households are also concentrated in Shelton. And so, some of the undoing of racial disparities is making sure that information and outreach and public participation is done in languages other than English so that people can use the languages that they're speaking. So, we have a policy problem. We have racial disparities in housing here in Shelton and in Mason County. What do we do about that? So, here are some solutions that you can actually write in the comp. Because BIPOC households are more likely to be renters and more likely to be cost burdened, they're low-income. One policy solution, the big umbrella solution, is make sure that we're prioritizing policies that support low-income renters. If you support all low-income renters, that will help end the racial disparities. So, how do we do that? We could seek out public funding opportunities for affordable housing development and maintenance. Um, we could figure out a way to have the right of first refusal on the foreclosures to be transitioned into affordable housing. Uh, prioritizing affordable housing that has longer lengths of affordability. So, for example, I know you all are gonna talk at your next study session about the multifamily tax exemption. In Washington State, it's eight years if it's market rate multifamily housing, and then there's a choice between twelve or twenty years for low-income multifamily tax. I would suggest that we think about twenty years, um, because we're all, it, unless you're planning to make sure that everybody can afford a market-rate housing, and I'm not sure how you can guarantee that, you know, having the tax incentives for twenty years is better in the end. Uh, otherwise, you're just kicking the can down the road and then you have to build new multifamily tax exempt low-income houses.
I have a question on the tax exempt, um, for that. Would that just be the city's portion? What about the schools and all the other, uh, junior districts? Everybody gets?
City's portion.
Just the city's portion?
On the improvements.
Okay.
Not, not, but not the property.
Right.
Yeah.
But they still be paying on the schools, which is what, sixty percent of the property taxes are schools?
That's a great policy thing to align to. I don't know. I can't answer that question right, but, um, what I would say is that someone told me, we gave this presentation last week to a group, and someone said that there are jurisdictions that give tax exemptions until it's converted to market rates, and then all of that passes up. And so that really incentivizes keeping it affordable, but also if it does convert, it gives the jurisdiction extra money to do things like pursue other affordable ones. Um, other things that can happen is incentivizing affordable and multifamily housing through things like expedited permitting processes for multifamily housing, or things like multifamily units paying lower benefits. So, for example, um, if every unit has to pay right now, I don't know if it's essential, but let's say it's a hundred percent, no matter how many units it is. If you take a duplex and you have each of them pay eighty percent, then developers are incentivized to create duplexes over single-family homes because it'll be cheaper for them fee-wise to have one duplex instead of two single-family homes. Um, another thing that could help is legalizing living in R Vs and tiny homes on taxes. Um, we have a lot of folks who are rented, um, in these kinds of structures, and they don't have renter protections because it's not considered legal structure. Policy solution number two, um, make opportunities accessible to BIPOC. Life experience really matters. Um, we can make sure that programs and public outreach are available in multiple languages. It can be really hard for BIPOC folks to come in and speak in government meetings, um, or wanna give their opinion because they, because of the history of racism, the history of Shelton being a sundown town. Um, but if you partner with organizations that already have good relationships with BIPOC communities, that will increase BIPOC participation. We can also do things to diversify leadership positions and support BIPOC in leadership positions, that folks who are already there. And then finally, there's a role in shifting the culture of racism. For example, that could look like cultural competence trainings for non-BIPOC leaders. And then third option in terms of policy solutions is tracking our progress on any racial disparities. We wanna know that over time works, and the only way to do that is actually track the data. So, a lot of tools already exist, federal and state, um. So, for example, the EPA has something called the PJ Spring, the Washington State Department of Health has the Environmental Health Disparities Map, their census data, you can conduct local surveys, or you can take our data and identify some of the disparities that way. Setting a regular progress review schedule is a totally reasonable, not expensive policy statement to put in a comp plan, and then adjusting policies regularly to, as you're reviewing the progress to better end racial disparities. So, number three, uh, providing for existing and projected housing. Not just knowing what the needs are, but how we actually get into the housing industry. So, here's the graph, here are two graphs of annual building activity in all of Mason County, which I believe includes the city of Shelton, uh, based on permits. And you can see how much building activity there is in terms of single-family homes, and how much building activity there is, this unit still has a number of permits, um, in multifamily units. And the, the one hundred and forty-three units in twenty twenty-one is not in the city of Shelton, that wasn't built there, and it's market rate, and it's pretty big, and it's because people can't afford to live there, and the people can afford to live there, but so we have a policy problem, not enough multifamily housing being built. Um, and I keep hearing over and over, it doesn't pencil for developers. So, the obvious solution, we don't wanna be spending a lot of government money on emergency services and street cleanup and social services from all the, I used to work, um, uh, for community services, the Transitional Age Youth Program, and I would have used so much mental health prices who were totally stable because they lost theirs. Um, it is expensive to knock house everywhere. It is cheaper for the government to invest in ways that won't be bad. And we are lagging far, far behind our neighboring counties in subsidized rents. Uh, this graph shows the number of subsidized units per thousand residents, so it's equalized on population. Grace Harbor, Kitsap, Jefferson, Thurston, they're all about the same, and Mason hasn't happened. So, the bad news is there's not enough affordable housing. The silver lining is that places like, uh, Washington State wants to see equity geographically. So, you show data like this in your grant applications for affordable housing projects, and you will run to the top of the list. Uh, so the solutions are investing in affordable housing, and I understand that Mason County and the city of Shelton are not wealthy. So, we need to seek funding for affordable housing. And this goes back to the Affordable Housing Packs, for example. Um, a small amount of money invested in the staff member who can apply to these multimillion-dollar grants and get the funding, um, the return on investment could be astronomical. Here's just a screenshot from the twenty twenty-two Housing Needs Assessment that just showed a huge ton of funding programs for affordable housing just in the state of Washington. Um, and I just wanna say that affordable housing is a hope from the Mason County Workforce Housing Summit in twenty nineteen. Affordable housing is not exclusively a social service issue and should be looked at as a driver of economic growth. Affordable housing can both retain as well as attract employees. Up to eighty percent of job growth comes from existing businesses, and they need more employees to play near where they live. And so, this is, it's not just about, like morally, I think everyone should do that, but even if you don't, I think we're on that. From an economic development standpoint, it is good for economic development for there to be housing in the local environment. Um, there, I don't have time to get into it, but there's a link by M R S C to find other forms of housing, uh, for affordable housing for local jurisdictions. So, some benefits of affordable housing. It has been proven that affordable housing lowers crime rates in distressed areas, and it has no impact on, um, high-income parents. So, there's a lot of fear mongering here, and the data just doesn't play out. Two, it boosts the local economy. Three, it saves taxpayer money, um, can even create operating surplus for local government. Um, I don't have time to get into those slides, but at the end, in the resources session, you can see some examples from the National Home Builders Association about how local jurisdictions can actually have an operating surplus by developing multiple units. Four, it reduces the rent cost burden because of state exemption laws that say the state legislator is, set state legislature is the only one, only jurisdiction that can set rent caps. Uh, except in the case of government-owned or operated housing. So, if you have local government-owned or operated housing, the city of Shelton can actually control the skyline of the events that we have. And number five, affordable housing has proven to increase property values in distressed areas. We don't have time to give all the data, but all of the links to give you more information. And then finally, we are leaving the results of not having enough affordable, not having enough housing here. As available, you know, basic market economics, as availability goes down, prices go up. And this graph is showing that vacancy rates are inversely related to home price increases. So, we need more housing to keep the housing prices down. That's the number one solution. And the same is true in terms of rental rates. And there are multiple Mason County authored reports that point out that increasing rent is the main predictor, a main driver of homelessness in our county. And, uh, a study that was not adjusted for inflation, that's a little old, but it's still, you get the idea. Every hundred-dollar increase in rent is associated with a thirty-two percent increase in homelessness in non-earths. It would really improve the city of Shelton to think about government housing in order to cut rent caps and to do things to in order to cut rent caps and to do things to increase availability of housing. So the policy problem, low vacancy rates mean low availability. Um, how we solve this kind of depends on what the root cause is. One root cause, which is a bigger problem in the unincorporated county, is that short-term rentals are taking up more than otherwise long-term rentals. The solution is regulations and limit fees. Uh, another cause is a low stock of affordable and subsidized housing available and very few multifamily units can be developed. Um, I talked about a bunch of these solutions already. I think what I haven't talked about yet is confirmed zoning codes allow to determine development and adjust if necessary. Um, as well as community land trusts. So those are, if you can incentivize creating land trusts where people come together to own the land. Um, and then individual own their houses, um, community land trusts are able to keep rents or, uh, access. Um, and then another cause, which again is more in the unincorporated county, is that seasonal and vacation homes are nineteen to twenty-five percent of Mason County housing, depending on what, uh, completion mandate you use. That's, we have more seasonal homes in Mason County than we have rental homes in Mason County. And in fact, we have more, uh, seasonal and vacation homes in Mason County than we have all the housing required to create in the next twenty years. So if we converted the seasonal and vacation homes into full-time homes, that would solve housing crisis. A solution is to really incentivize long-term rentals or owner occupied houses and disincentivize second homes unless they're long-term. Basic fairness policy, everyone gets one home for anyone else to be. Um, and then finally, the last housing policy issue that I think is really worth addressing is environmental health risks. Um, I didn't put this slide in here, but there's a slide showing the life risk in the city of Shelton as being high compared to the rest of the state and high compared to the county. Uh, and that's in large part because of the age of the homes in the city of Shelton. And I have a couple of these who I share about their experiences.
Hi, I'm Ash. Um, a few years ago, I lived in an apartment for three years and lived in a residential home. And there's been three years that we lived there and my mom, the father, and the wife, my family was constantly sick.
I've been in low home housing cities, having in Shelton where the flooring is still rotten, it's subfloors are there. There's just, you know, it wouldn't be that people are walking on, and that's really like, uh, things are totally exposed to extreme temperatures and elements and, um, we also have outdoor examples of environmental health risks, subject system failure, flooding, landslides, erosion, contamination. And so the COP Plan is an opportunity to address, um, to address environmental health risks as one of the housing barriers. So one solution is promoting education and taking advantage of existing programs. The Department of Commerce has an indoor pollution education and a major program. Uh, PUDs have energy retrofits and waterization. Uh, policy solution two, cleanup pollution before building. Um, for example, the Goose Lake area that has, I believe, it's been with absence, um, that should be cleaned up before the housing is put there. Um, uh, I saw a study that said Mason County is number two in cancer rates out of all the counties in Washington State. Second one, Flawless, and Flawless is number one because it's a major cancer treatment destination, which is not true. Uh, so it would behoove us to review the Department of Apologies list of contaminated sites before approving building permits in the areas. And make sure that the cleaners clean up the sites if they can, it shouldn't fall on taxpayers to clean up after the moves. Policy solution three is consider climate change and climate development. These environmental health risks are only gonna increase with climate change. And so that's considered things like sea level rise, flooding, um, how clear-cut logging, uh, leads to landslides, erosion and windfall. Incentivizing regenerative agriculture, food growing and housing developments, allowing compost toilets and rainwater systems to conserve resources and lower the price of development, uh, for all consumers as a whole given, but that's the one here towards the areas that are low priced. And subject system risks too. So that was a lot. Um, here's a summary of every policy we just talked about or showed you. And it's crosswalked to the Department of Commerce's housing element checklist. So each of these things is a possibility, a way for you to meet the requirements of the Department of Commerce, um, checklist. And this slideshow I reviewed with the Department of Commerce staff ahead of time, um, to make sure that I was on point, I wasn't just representing anything. And I also know that the Department of Commerce is gonna come do a presentation in Mason County with an advisory council on Monday, March third, as it is. Um, and so that's another way to get more information directly from the source as well. Um, we didn't have time to show every slide, um, but there is a whole bunch of extra resources at the end of the presentation with links for you to educate yourself more. Again, we encourage everyone to take the survey and to incorporate that data. We've asked people if they're in the city or not, so we could take out all the city data and just review the city data, um, along with the broader Shelton area as well, so to include UGA films. Um, it wasn't fair to ask residents to leave the Shelton games, they don't know. But we can give you the broad Sheldon, the new Sheldon. Um, and we'd love to answer your questions and we'd love to work with you on solving these problems so that we're not just here listening to be placed, but we're actually proactive in the next twenty years. This is the moment to think about.
Commerce, your questions?
I have a question about community land trusts. Is that something we can do downtown if we have like a creative arts district or historic district? Is that something that would be in line with something like that?
Uh, I, I imagine it could. I can definitely be a question to the planning department. Um, as long as zoning laws don't prohibit it.
Lot of information, good information and appreciate your presentation.
Watch, I'm center.
Thank you guys.
Also thank all the young people for being courageous to share their stories. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
This may be one of the popular, but it's not a real.
Yeah.
The slides were created by you, so we didn't even make it and there's folks. This came about because they themselves said housing affordable is a priority.
That's awesome that they're thinking that, that big and.
We appreciate you coming.
Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Councilor, have any new items? No, I have one thing that we should congratulate our pretty clerk Donna Hall for her, um, International Institute of Municipal Clerks. I'm gonna go ahead and read the email that I received, um, because it explains it all. So we all know what we're talking about. Uh, dear Erica Nisco, Donna and all, uh, City of Shelton has earned her designation of certificate from municipal clerk, DMC, which was awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. I M, I I M C grants that CMC, oh, this is gonna be designation, the only municipal clerk who complete demanding education requirements and have a good record and significant contributions of their local government and community and state. The International Institute of Municipal Clerks founded in nineteen forty-seven has fourteen thousand members throughout the United States, Canada and fifteen countries. The mission of this global nonprofit corporation is to enhance educational opportunities and professional development of its diverse membership. In light of the speed and the drastic nature of change these days, lifelong learning is not only desirable, it is necessary for all the local government to keep pace with growing demands and changing needs of the citizens we serve. Your city can take immense pride in Donna's educational accomplishments and achievements of this milestone. On behalf of the I I M C Board of Directors, I'm honored to endorse the conferring of CMC to Donna and all CMC of the City of Shelton. We share your pride and achievement and we applaud your support for the role Donna plays in your city. And that is sincerely from, um, Lisa Garcia, President.
We already knew you were off though, so.
Mark, do you have anything to say about Donna?
You know, I mean, you all know the importance of her plays. Um, beyond that, it's what Donna does personally, right? And the, and the dedication she has to the city and this community, um, her, her willingness to work across, you know, all the departments here, she's just a pure person here, truly appreciate her teaching events as well as educating herself and making sure that yeah, the best service possible for a city clerk or a community.
Agreed. We're lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we don't have any other items to discuss. So our next meeting will be on, Mark, I will be out, um, so the mayor will be handling that meeting. Outside of a consent agenda, we'll have resolution, um, intent to annex land in the city limits. Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Contract. Um, and that looks like that's it so far. Good chat.